This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the rule, please?
City Attorney Doctor?
Here.
Interim City Manager Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Dean?
Here.
Commissioner Fever?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Reed is excused.
Roger that. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To bring that law into existence and to make it out in this world with the integrity of justice.
Would you put that little Reed stuff back, Madam Clerk? Please? Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage in your participation. All right. The minutes for May 9th were received. Do we have any corrections, additions? The minutes will be accepted. Consent agenda. Claims. A. Authorizing the mayor to sign a, I should have asked about that. Budget, boundary relocation affidavit that are required to facilitate a property donation. Mr. Manager? The claims, is that it? No, claims. Go ahead.
Mayor, we recommend approval of the claims.
Any comments or questions from the commission? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, do you want us to take the full consent agenda item, A, B, and C, or just A?
We'll just do A and then go down the line.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I will move item A, claims.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Now, B, authorizing the mayor to sign boundary, boundary relocation affidavits that are required to facilitate a property donation.
Mayor, city staff recommends that commission authorize the mayor to sign two affidavits that will authorize a boundary line relocation process that is a required step towards accomplishing the goal of facilitating Tom and Gale Janko's eventual donation of a portion of their ownership for public open space. Mayor.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move approval of consent agenda item B, authorizing the mayor to sign boundary relocation affidavits that are required to facilitate a property donation.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer comments? Manager, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Downtown TIF work plan update.
Mayor, Commissioners, you were presented at the last administrative meeting, the downtown TIF work plan update. It's before you this evening for approval. And staff does recommend approval. And I think that there are perhaps questions concerning this and some of the projects before you this evening.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a more of a procedural question. And Ms. Ray might be able to answer this as well if there was some earlier discussion. If this item is approved right now, we have two other items on the regular items section for two distributions of TIF funds. Within the memos, those would not meet the match requirements that we are considering for adoption on this item. And so, Ms. Ray, I guess I'm wondering, and I don't know if this is more like a chicken or egg question, since it's the first time we've adopted this kind of match guarantee with items on the agenda that don't necessarily align with what we are about to, to or not adopt. So can you clarify what that might look like?
You have the floor, Ms. Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Dean, in response to your question, the applications that are coming before you tonight as regular items actually predate the board making the recommendation for there being a match requirement. So functionally, I don't think that there's a conflict there, but any awards granted tonight are solely at your discretion.
Okay. And I guess, Mr. Mayor, a quick follow-up. Have there been any other recommendations that the TIF board has, has made that we have, that has not made, that have not yet made it to the commission?
Mayor, Commissioners, no. This is, the two that are before you tonight are the only ones outstanding presently. The board has set forth a plan to only receive applications on a biannual basis, the next of which would be in July. So presently, these are the only two that are outstanding before we get another set of applications this summer.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution approving the work plan and budget for the Tourism Business Improvement District. Oh, is that right? Nope, I'm on the wrong page. I'm really sorry about that. I will move the downtown TIF work plan update.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer comments from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Okay, bid awards. Bid award of 2022 Chip and Seal Project, TSD-69. Director Knopki or Assistant Deputy Director Kui, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Director Knopki's taken some well-deserved time off this week, so you got me. May not be as wise, but I promise my beard is just as long. Today, we got the bid award for our 2022 Chip Seal Project. The majority of which would be in the Sun Haven subdivision after we overlaid in the prior year. So the single bid was received from Helena Sand and Gravel on May 10th of 2022 for a total square yardage to be done of 153,387 square yards with an average price of $3.32 per square yard for a total bid of $508,939.71. It's a relatively significant increase in the cost this year versus prior years, pretty much generally related to the cost of rise in petroleum-based products and oil. And so, the recommendation for staff would be to award the bid to Helena Sand and Gravel in the amount of $508,939.71.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Deputy Director Kui?
One question, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kui, can you discuss a little bit what the notification process looks like for neighbors in the area once these projects get going?
Sure. Mayor and Commissioner Dean, our notification process will, the majority of it will go through our PIO, Mr. Garson. We'll do public service announcements. I believe the, we'll have the contractor put out some notifications as well. There should be signage in the neighborhood. It should be well, well-laid out that we'll be working.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Any public comments? Anything online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to award 2022 Chip Seal Project number TSD-69 to the lowest responsible bidder, Helena Sand and Gravel, for the amount of 508,000, 508,939.71.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Communications proposals from the Commissioners. Commissioners? You want to talk about it?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just in, in regards to moving forward with the recruitment process for city manager, obviously, we have an interim manager in Mr. Burton, and, and we, as a commission, hope to, hope to seek a permanent manager. And one of the things that the mayor and I discussed briefly, and we maybe bring to the larger body and the public, is the idea of perhaps an assessment prior to that of how we got here. And, and maybe that will help us to structure our recruitment process moving forward. So generally, that's kind of what we talked about, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor? I think that that is a good route forward. And looking forward to starting those conversations. I will say that I think having some sort of best practices or, or structures or systems that we can put together to ensure that future processes, not just in the immediate future, but in 10 and 15 years, are established, will be really important. I think one of the things that we've seen over the last few years is that there were a number of systems that were more or less obliterated and, and left the, the city as an organization in a position of having to, to start over from the ground up, which hasn't always been the best use of, of time or resources, particularly when we had a pandemic start, a lot of crises occur. So I think if, the more we can do to help future commissions have a set of best practices and, and resources, the better those commissions will be served and, and therefore, the people of Helena.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the commission?
And I might, I might just add that, you know, we're looking for an independent consulting, consulting firm to help us through this process. This is not something we're going to make up on our own, so. But did think it was important for the broader public to understand that there is a process moving forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Report of the city attorney.
Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Report of the city manager.
Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report this evening either.
Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative John Andrew, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just wanted to mention, as you probably already are aware of, that the Helena Citizens Council review and recommendation regarding the fiscal year 2023 preliminary budget has been submitted, and I see copies back there for the public. The other things I wanted to mention were that we were following such things as the Helena Strategic Plan for Waste Reduction, and that's coming before the City Commission June 15th. We're also trying to attend meetings such as City of Helena's Downtown Multimodal Plan and be involved with that. If comments are needed, we'll, we'll submit some. And lastly, I'd like to speak for HCC and thank the, the City Commission and city staff for all their hard work on putting together the fiscal year 2023 preliminary budget. And we look forward to the public hearing on June 27th. So that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative Andrew. Any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner, Representative Andrew, I don't think the commission has done yet.
I, I-
They may have some questions for you.
I don't have any questions for you. Of course, Commissioner Dean might, so I don't want to rule that out. But I did want to say, my, express my thanks to the HCC for the, for the recommendations that you made toward the budget. And I, I think the manager will, maybe a little later in the meeting, get, get into specifics of next steps for us all relative to the budget process. But I would encourage HCC representation, like at our next admin meeting and the, and the budget hearing that you, you'd mentioned. So, you know, in the event you had further comment you wanted to, you or your group would want to add, so.
We do have a formal budget committee that's been really involved with it and has included the rest of us, so they will be in, in attendance.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to thank the HCC for its invitation to us recently and would encourage that in the future. Invite us anytime. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Dean?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Concur in Commissioner Logan's thoughts, minus my many questions. I, I, one piece I just wanted to note was I hope that maybe the HCC will consider a similar process when we start considering how we distribute the rest of the ARPA dollars as well. I always really appreciate reading the HCC's budget recommendations, and it always provides this good perspective that we don't always get elsewhere. So just something to think about once the budget is adopted and we start moving into that ARPA discussion.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Andrew.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, please. Go ahead.
It's easy to forget that I'm here.
I apologize. I sincerely apologize.
No reason, I'll be quiet most of the night. I just want to underscore what Commissioners Logan and Dean just said, read the HCC. I really do like their report. It's simple, straightforward. It gives us some guidance and some notion of where they would want to go already with, say, ARPA money. And so, I thought that was a good report on their part, and I hope they do continue to stay involved with this commission as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Andrew, did you hear that? Okay. Okay. Any other comments from the commission? Okay, we'll move along. Public hearing. Consider a resolution approving the work plan and budget for Tourism Business Improvement District and levying an assessment on all properties within the district for fiscal year 2023. Director Danielson, TBAD Executive Director Opitz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Good evening.
Good evening.
On May 23rd, the Executive Director Andrea Opitz was present at the commission meeting to answer any questions on the annual budget and work plan for the Tourism Business Improvement District. And tonight is the public hearing to approve that work plan and budget and to provide for the levying of the assessment to free the costs of the district. I am open to any questions that you may have, and I believe Andrea Opitz is on the line as well in order to answer any questions that you may have. And that is all I have for my presentation.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Director Danielson or Director Opitz? Any public comments? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move a resolution approving the work plan and budget for the Tourism Business Improvement District and levying an assessment on all properties within the district for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer comments from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Regular items. Consider a curb cut variance request for Aspen Park Phase Two. Director, Deputy Director Kui and/or Engineer Young, you have the floor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We're just bringing to you the request for a variance for sidewalks at either end of Vista View Avenue in, out in the Mountain View Meadows subdivision. We've been working with the developer and his engineer to try to figure out the best approach to this issue of private streets coming on to public drive, or public streets, private drives coming on to public streets. And this is kind of where we landed on it. So if you have any questions, I'd try to answer those for you. I also saw the developer and his, excuse me, engineer are both here tonight, so they might be able to answer any questions that I won't.
Okay. Do you have any comments to add, the developer and/or the engineer?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Jeff Larson. I'm with Larson Civil Engineering, and I'm the engineer on this project, which is Aspen Park Phase Two. What we're looking at is really, we, we're, it's more about approaches than sidewalks. And, and we have a 30-foot wide street, and we're in the R4 zones, we're allowed a 30-foot wide approach, which sounds like, hey, that's simple, you know? Just line them up and you're good to go. But it's not that simple because we have parking on one side of the street, and that pushes our, our, one of our driving lanes right up against the curb. And when you come out of that approach, you need some extra width on the approach to, to make the radius for fire trucks and larger, larger trucks to make that corner. And so, what we have right now and what's been approved is a 30-foot approach, but it's offset from the street. And what we're asking for is we want to get rid of that offset, and we want the north side where it's, you know, it's got the driving lane close, we're going to, you know, extend that because of the radius. The other side, we want to line up on the curb line, so it just looks normal. And, you know, some of our, our reasoning or, or things that we think support this, if you think about the, you know, the original tent of that 30-foot width restriction, you know, it's, it's generally applied to driveways and parking lot approaches and things like that. This is a private street, so it's a full-width 30-foot street with curb and gutters. And if it was a public street, I mean, there'd be no question. I mean, we'd, we'd design it to fit, fit trucks and to, you know, match the width of the street, and, and that's really all we're asking to do. We don't see any disadvantages. I know in the staff report, there was one mentioned about driving over sidewalk or curb. I really think, you know, with, with the adjustment, I, I don't believe that there, there will be any less potential or more potential to drive over sidewalk or curb. But there are a lot of advantages. We're going to improve the function of the intersection. You know, the current design is tight even for fire trucks. And, you know, and then there's also the potential for trucks that are larger than fire trucks, you know, moving vans or construction vehicles. So, so by opening the intersection, that we think we, we just improved the situation. The width, the offset intersection, the other thing that happens is the, the throat or the width of the street right at the approach is actually narrower than the full 30 feet. And, and I think that's, you know, something we should try to avoid if we can. If, if approved, I think the new layout also improves snow removal. And then it, the bottom line, it just will look right. I mean, it's, you, with the offset in, intersection, you know, you might scratch your head driving by and kind of wonder, man, what did that engineer, what was he thinking when he designed that? So I'm asking, please don't make me that engineer and approve, approve this if you would. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Dean?
I do have a question. Thank you. I think this is going to be a running joke. So this is the first time that a variance request like this has come to us. So I guess I'm wondering, in terms of the safety aspect, we know that when streets are wider, there's more, data tells us that there's, there are more, the higher likelihood of accidents and pedestrian-related injuries, et cetera. Is there anything here that, any maybe traffic calming measures or anything like that that will help reduce the likelihood of any type of injury since it's a, a longer way for folks to be walking across?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Dean, I don't see this crossing being any, any longer than the adjacent streets to it.
Okay.
If we go out to the, I think it's Alpine View Drive or Twilight, I believe there's a full width, which would be two driving lanes and two parking lanes, so that's going to be 32 feet of asphalt. And so, in this case, I don't, I don't think we're going to run into that problem.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have no hands raised online and no written public comment.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Fever.
I, I move to approve the widening of Vista View Avenue, curb cuts at Alpine View Drive and Twilight Avenue to 35 feet and 36 feet respectively.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer comments from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. B, consider updating Section 3-4 Holiday and Holiday Pay section of the City of Helena Personnel Policy Handbook. Director McMahon? Finally, we get to see you up here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So at the December 2019 City Commission meeting, there was, it was voted and approved to update the Columbus Day policy, or excuse me, holiday to Indigenous Peoples' Day. That was never reflected in our policies, so I'm just asking to formally make that change again tonight, so we have it formally adopted in our policies. Secondly, President Biden, last year, signed a bill declaring Juneteenth a national holiday. And for the last two years, the City of Helena has also recognized that holiday, so this is a proposal to add that as an official holiday for the City of Helena.
Thank you, Director McMahon. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, no questions, but I will just give the comment that I'm glad we are updating our, our policies and procedures to reflect the practice that we've had the last couple of years. So thank you for bringing that to our attention and looking forward to having this officially in our Personnel Policy Handbook.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no online.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I.
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I will approve updating Section 3-4, Holidays and Holiday Pay Section of the City of Helena Personnel Policies Handbook.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you, Director McMahon. Consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing fund to Union Market Properties LLC for water and sidewalk infrastructure improvement on 101 East Sixth Avenue. Community Development Director Brings or Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Let me get my PowerPoint presentation started for you all. Can everybody see that on their screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Brilliant. Thank you. Okay, so as you just mentioned, you're tonight discussing a downtown tax increment financing application for the Union Market Building located at 101 East Sixth Avenue. The application was presented to the city on December 27th last year by Seth Brandonberger, who is the owner of the property. He had submitted an application that was to address water, stormwater, and pedestrian infrastructure issues of the property. Originally, his request was $41,320, $28,340 of which was for water service line replacement and associated sidewalk segment replacements. And the balance of $12,980 was for stormwater improvements on the property. The application was reviewed by the Downtown TIF Advisory Board at the regular meeting on January 13th this year. And they voted unanimously to recommend funding for the water service line and sidewalk infrastructure improvements to replace the 95-year-old lead service line as well as the sidewalk that sits atop it. Again, that was for $28,340. The applicant in this instance does have $10,000 in match funding that they will be contributing toward the project, which constitutes 35% match. Things to consider with this application and the one to follow is that state code under Section 7154288 allows the expenditure of TIF funds for projects that address blight where they can clearly serve an, an underlying public purpose, which ties back to the state constitution that then also mandates that taxes shall be levied for, by general laws for public purposes. The downtown urban renewal district plan has set forth goals and objectives to achieve the clearance of blight in the district. And there are two goals in particular that tie back to this present project. The first of which is to invest in public infrastructure needed to attract development. And the second is to improve transit, pedestrian, and bike connections. And I did just want to note for everybody's education that as of the end of April, there was a balance of $79,397 available in the Downtown TIF Fund. So there is ample funding if you should wish to approve this project for the amount recommended by the board. So before you now is the question as to whether you wish to approve or deny a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Union Market Properties LLC for water and sidewalk infrastructure improvements at 101 East Sixth Avenue. And I apologize that I am not in chambers with you this evening, but I believe that Seth Brandonberger, the property owner, might be present to answer any questions you may have of him. And I am happy to answer any questions you may have with me.
Thank you, Planner Ray. Comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Dean, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. I get, my question is probably actually for Director Danielson. I was, prior to this, I was, I looked at the ending cash balance on June 30 of FY '22, and we have that as $180,000 for the Downtown TIF District. So I guess, what is the discrepancy there? And are there funds that have not yet been expended that we have approved?
Director Danielson, are you available?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Ray, would you remove your? Oh, I guess someone will have to approve it. You have the floor, Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Dean, if you're referring to the Downtown TIF financial statement in your budget packet.
Yes.
Those are, we, as of, what Ellie is referring to is we don't actually distribute funds unless we've actually received tax dollars. And so we're expecting another large distribution or collection of tax dollars in the month of June. So we've estimated what we're going to receive through the end of the year on the budget documents.
Okay, great. And do we expect, should, and I guess this is a question for both this item and probably the next item. Do we expect that if those two items are approved that, that those TIF dollars will be distributed before the end of the fiscal year?
Thank you, Commissioner Dean. We do have weekly check runs. If, once, typically how it works is once you distribute them, they, they get forwarded to the finance department to process. So it just is a matter of getting that information to the finance department and processing the requests and sending the check run out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
If I can add to that really quickly, there also remains the need to create a development agreement if you do approve any funding for either applicant. So that will take a little time as well. It has to go through legal review and so forth.
Thank you, Planner Ray. Comments?
Just a quick qualifier on that.
Please go ahead.
Can you maybe further explain what that process looks like?
Sure. Mayor Commissioners, following any approval of TIF funding in any of the districts, our department, the Community Development Department, will work on completing the development agreement template that the city attorney's office created. It's essentially a contract for work. And then we will funnel that through for review with the legal department, and then it will go out for signatures. But that doesn't mean that the applicant who is receiving funding can't get the work completed and then tee up all of their invoicing and everything else in order to make that drawdown request.
Okay, very helpful. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe Commissioner Fever did have his hand raised.
Oh, Commissioner Fever, you have, you, you have the floor.
Oh, well, I'm not public comment, Dean. I wanted to make a motion, so I was a little quick there.
Oh, okay. Make sure that the motion will be made by Commissioner Fever. So stand down. Okay. So any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Union Market Properties LLC for water and sidewalk infrastructure improvements at the 101 East Sixth Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, the, the Union Market is a iconic location in Helena. I mean, iconic.
Yeah.
It is important that we help preserve these neighborhoods as they are and improve them as they are and not see them somehow or another just degrade. And so I'm very delighted we're moving forward on this issue.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other final comments from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing fund to American Real Estate Holdings LLC for accessibility improvement at 34 West Sixth Avenue. Director Brings or Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Can you see this next PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, so this application is for the Pennwell Building, which is just within a block's distance of where we currently are in the City County Building. And the applicant is, they submitted their application on December 30th. They were specifically seeking funding for an array of different aspects of an overall rehab project that is the first in 50 years to take place on that, at that property. So their request was originally for $117,500 toward a $235,000 project. So they were originally seeking 50% funding toward their renovation activities. The breakdown of their project scope of work is as follows. $25,000 for the accessible entrances along Sixth Avenue, I believe 30 off the top of my head. $115,000 for an ADA accessible elevator in the building, which requires retrofitting shafts, et cetera, in the middle of the building for that purpose. And then $25,000 for ADA bathroom improvements inside the building as well. $5,000 for facade improvements and $25,000 in total for the associated design work for the project. Just like with the earlier application, this one was reviewed by the Downtown TIF Advisory Board at the regular meeting on January 13th this year and was also unanimously recommended for funding for only $35,133. This wasn't, as with the other application, toward a specific aspect of the scope of work for the renovation. Rather, it was for just the overall scope of work. And the reason it's so small in comparison to their original request is because that was the remaining amount available in consideration of the other applications that were recommended for approval at that meeting. So if granted the $35,133, given that the applicant will be crunching the cost of the remainder of the project, they'd basically be bringing forward 85% match toward the project. So the same consideration should be considered with, considering whether this project actually serves a public purpose under state law. And then looking at the downtown urban renewal district plan for this particular project, there are two goals that align with the overall renovation activities. The first is to upgrade underperforming properties. And the second is to promote historic preservation to create a quality and unique experience. And as we've already discussed, the funds available. I will move on to the motion before you tonight, which is to consider whether you wish to move to approve or deny a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to American Real Estate Holdings LLC for accessibility improvements at 101 East Sixth Avenue. And again, I am happy to take any questions you may have of me. I believe Joe Mueller, on behalf of American Real Estate Holdings, is also present tonight to provide any context for his application.
Thank you, Planner Ray. Mr. Mueller, do you have anything to add to this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Just to say that I'm here to answer any, any questions and, and how that's developed and what I need to do down there. It's an old building, 1906. They weren't thinking about accessibility back then. And as you go on and deal with people, you find out how important accessibility is, not just to people that would rent in your building, but to their customers, people that are coming in, people that they sign contracts with. It's, you know, times have changed for the better in that area. So I want to address that. We've done a lot of work, preliminary work, to determine if that is possible to do in a building like that. Crawled all through there with consultants and engineers and people that put cameras down sewer lines to find out where they are exactly under your building before you're going to put in an elevator shaft and worked with Mike Dowling's firm and his staff down there. And looking, looking forward to being able to do it. I'll answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? I see this, there's a comment here saying 34. The motion that Ms. Ray read was 101 East Sixth Street should be 34 West Sixth Street. Is that correct, Ms. Ray?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, yes, it is. I would like to thank our chief building official for catching that I was a little trigger happy on that slide.
Roger that. Okay. No comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Fever.
I move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to American Real Estate Holdings LLC for accessibility improvements at 34 West Sixth Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments from the commission?
And again, this is a historic property in Helena, and it's really a classy-looking building from the outside that needs a lot of work inside. So this is just a good thing to move forward on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll entertain, oh, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Okay. Consider the fiscal year 2023 preliminary budget. Interim City Manager Burton and/or Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few things to say procedurally. And as you know, Mayor and Commissioners, you've spent many hours reviewing the preliminary budget up to this point. And tonight is the opportunity to bring it forward into the public arena officially and to the, the process of review and consideration for the governing body. Mayor, as you know, we'll introduce the budget this evening, and Director Danielson will do that. Then on Wednesday, the 15th, at the, at the administrative meeting, the commission will have the opportunity to talk about modifications or amendments to the preliminary budget. Staff will prepare those as directed at the time. Then we will come forward at the regular commission meeting on the 27th for public hearings and consideration of adoption of the preliminary budget. And as you know, we'll carry that forward after we get taxable values later on into the summer for final adoption of the budget. So with that, Mayor, with your permission, I, I would ask Director Danielson to introduce publicly the preliminary 2023 budget.
Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, Commissioner, and City Manager Burton. So before you, we have put together the preliminary fiscal 2023 budget for your consideration. I want to take this opportunity to thank all of the departments, the directors, their admins and supervisors that participated in both providing all the information for this budget, but also coming together and presenting their budgets to the commission and answering questions. I have special thanks for Zach, my budget officer, Amanda Opitz, and for helping putting this budget together. And also Jake Garson, who has done just a fabulous, lovely job in the, the document layout and the pictures. He's done a fabulous job. And then also to Renee McMahon, the HR Director, who was very instrumental in, in working on this budget and getting the information together. With that, I just want to remind the commission that we had four public meetings in May. And each division of the City of Helena government entities came forward and presented their sections of the budget to the commission and accepted and answered any questions at that time. The city manager has put his priorities and his message to the commission and to the public that his priorities for this particular budget were healthcare benefits support and promote market-based play plan for our employees of the City of Helena to increase transparency of public records through a digitization and preservation records project that will be spearheaded through the city clerk's office and to support financial stability and responsible capital improvements with sound policies and procedures. And I believe that this budget has, has fulfilled those, those priorities to the commission. I will speak to the, the overall budget process. We are presenting a balanced budget to the commission. In the general fund, we have, are dipping into reserves for $1,204,427, or $427, but those are for one-time expenditures. We are transferring $744,000 to the general capital fund. And at our last meeting. And at our last meeting with the Commission, we talked about what priorities the department heads had come up with to utilize those funds, that, that contribution to the General Capital Fund, inclusive of the reserves in the General Capital Fund, to have general capital expenditures in approximately $1.3 million. We're transferring $400,000 to the Law and Justice Center for needed boiler repairs and roof repairs at that building. There's a $50,000 amount that is earmarked for City Manager recruitment. And there's a $10,000 deficit for the, the Voca grant that came in lower than expected. That was a very, very competitive grant this year. They are reevaluating some of the, the remaining funds, and we may get a little bit more, but I haven't had an opportunity to review that. But that does support that program, a very vital program for the, the City of Helena. And I'm, I'm glad that we're able to fund that program out of our budget. We have several transfers out of the general fund. $143,000 to the golf course for their geo-debt. $412,000 to public transit. $360,000 to the Civic Center for operating support. In, in addition, we are making some, several contributions. $20,000 to the Historic Preservation Program. We are supporting HCTB in about $207,000. $1,000 for the Sun Run. $1,000 for Big Sky Pride. $5,000 for the Symphony. $5,000 for MBACK. And $20,000 for Helena Area Community Foundation to support other nonprofits in our community. And we made the commitment in the last fiscal '22 budget to delegate the responsibility of those donations to local nonprofits, to Helena Area Community Foundation. And they've done a fabulous job, and they'll be coming forward, I believe it's on the June 15th meeting, to provide their annual report to the City Commission on how they have utilized the contributions that the City of Helena have given them thus far. As the City Manager indicated, we will wait until our assessed values come in, and then we will bring forward a final budget to the Commission in late August, early September, along with levying the assessment on, for property taxes. I think that is all I have at this point. And I, my primary focus has been on just the general fund, but each of the department heads and/or their representatives, I believe, are also online to, to present their particular budgets or answer any questions. Overall, I will just make one other note that the authorized positions in this particular budget is 373.98 or 374 full and part-time permanent employees. And that includes the addition of 5.25 new full-time equivalents and the reduction of a half-time equivalent. Those additional FTEs are, one is in the City Clerk's Office. One is a new building inspector. One is a new industrial facilities superintendent. We're increasing the sustainability officer by .5 FTE to a full-time position. And one new transportation engineering technician. In addition to a .75 increase in, for our concessions server out at the golf course. And this particular budget also is downsizing a .5 FTE in the City Manager's Office for the volunteer coordinator. And it represents a 5.03% cost of living adjustments for all non-contract employees. The fire, the, the fire services has their contracted adjustments in their union contract. And then the police contract called for a minimum of 2% or citywide COLA, whichever is higher. So the police department employees will also receive a 5.03% cost of living increase in this budget. And I think that is all I have right now. And I'm very open to questions and comments from the Commission.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the Commission?
Well, Mayor, I just have a couple of comments. First, I, when Director Danielson was thanking all the staff, I think it's important to thank Director, Director Danielson. This was a heroic lift, especially in the midst of getting a lot of other federal dollars, rebuilding systems that either didn't exist or, or were blown up previously. I, I think it, it's hard to really put into words how much work has gone into this. And I want you to know that it does not go unnoticed, and we are so grateful for you and your staff. The other comments that I'd just like to make, I, I think sometimes, unless folks have been paying attention to our first four budget sessions in May or digging into the fine details of the budget, they may not understand or, or realize the significant investments that are included in this budget in modernizing the systems that help the city run and run more effectively and more transparently. With, if this budget is adopted, is submitted, or with, with other amendments, we're going to have the opportunity to really be able to access data that we've never had the opportunity to see, improve efficiency within the city, and then really move, I think, be a state leader in improving transparency to, and public access to, to public records and historical documents. And, and all of the many items that flow through this building that the public, unless you're paying attention to every single meeting and going to every advisory committee, may not know exist and are available. So I'm very, very excited about the ways in which we are, we are modernizing and we are using technology as a tool to really improve public access and, and efficiency within the city. Things like understanding what our carbon footprint and all of our buildings are and how we can make ourselves more, more efficient and sustainable. The other piece I'd just like to note is the investments that are made in this. And really want to commend City Manager Burton for ensuring this was included. But like all organizations, private, public, nonprofit, we too are struggling with retention and, and recruitment in staff. And this budget puts us on a path to, to get to, to a stable place, but then also really prioritize how we are recruiting folks and ensuring that we are, we are getting the most high-quality staff to serve the citizens of Helena. So just very grateful to the City Manager, the Finance Director, and the entire team that helped put this together. I'm really excited, and I think this is a budget that will continue to help stabilize the city as an organization and also put us on a path to really be a statewide leader in, in how you provide information and access to the public.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? I just want to also re-echo what the Commissioners said. Interim City Manager Burton and Director Danielson, kudos to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, okay. Now, I'll entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to reiterate, I'm happy to make the motion. The next step, so this is the first time that the public will have seen the full budget in a regular meeting. Again, all of, all of the previous, earlier iterations are on the admin meeting agendas. But following this, we'll have another opportunity to discuss what's included in this preliminary budget at the admin meeting, and then, and then move forward. Would you, is that accurate?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, yes. So just to say it again, so if the public's listening, you'll accept the budget perhaps this evening. And then on Wednesday, the 15th, for as much time as the conversation takes, the Commission can talk about any modifications to the preliminary budget that, that you want to propose. Following that meeting, we'll prepare the action items for your public hearing on the 27th, which is your next regular commission meeting.
Before you make the motion, I neglected to inquire about public comments on this item. So are there any public comments on this item? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comments online.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will move to accept the interim City Manager's budget submittal as the FY '23 preliminary budget, beginning the process of a public hearing, which will take place on June 27th, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. I, this went a lot quicker than I was thinking. So I'd be remiss without, as my colleagues have, thanking you all for the work put into this. This is, I guess Commissioner Dean's in my third go at this. And, and I gotta say, it's, it's been the, I, I felt like I've been very fully informed of each department's needs and the direction that they're moving. And, and it's just, has been a heavy lift and, and quite an effort. And so I would like to thank Director Danielson, interim City Manager Burton, and, and all of the staff of various departments. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I can't let my... I can't let my fellow Commissioners be the only ones to say thank you to Sheila and staff. I'm very impressed with the process we've been engaged in so far. I'm delighted that we are moving forward in compensating our employees. I think the five-plus percent increase is a bare minimum right now in today's circumstances. And I'm hoping that as we move down the road in future years, we can continue to reward our employees for the hard work they do. It's just essential that we not lose them elsewhere and that we have an invitation for folks to come join our Helena city workforce. I, I think that's an important segment of this budget. There are a lot of other things in this budget that are extremely worthwhile. The budget could pass right now in its final form, and it would serve this city well. I guess I'm looking forward to whatever discussions we have on the 27th or up to that time. But I think the job has already been well done here. So thank you all involved.
You bet. Any final comments from the Commission? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any online? Or he stands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no hands raised, no written public comment online.
Is there any final discussion from the Commission? All right. This meeting is adjourned.